They've allowed the surcharge, the one-foot surcharge. They basically modeled maps and floodways and squeezed everything until that surcharge reaches that one-foot level. And that's where they determined the best way to do it. So it has to be one-foot.
So would that surcharge vary with different topography? I would assume would the surcharge, if you put fill in an area that was going into a narrower zone, would the surcharge be greater because of the already existing construction?
Technically, I think that correct. I'm wrong, but when they go that one-foot surcharge, that's what we're running against, the flood line and floodway. So one foot's the max. And then if they're over the one-foot, they'll widen floodway afterward.
Okay, so when they're mapping, it's where that one-foot is.
To keep it. Right. One-foot's the max.
But, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Jim.
I guess the question I'm asking is, would fill have more or less of that in a mountainous area? Because there's less room for floodwaters to spread out that if you fill the areas where it would normally be spreading out, there should not be further increase in velocity in the narrow places.
If you were to fill the floodplain, you're going to increase your floodwater. Um, let me have a look at it on a proprietary, yeah.
Yeah.
Little Tennessee River, the opposite of the other thing.
I guess what I'm getting at is somebody, you know, people often say, well, FEMA made these regulations for flatlands, they don't contain the mountains. But what I've heard people say is that, it's not that we, that fill would have less of that in the mountains, that we have more. So that's what I was trying to get at, not if my weather business was moving or not.
Forget by eight minutes, is a foot, when you say it, you can't exceed a foot of surcharge. A foot, I mean, it, I guess a foot in a flat, a foot in Florida, you would take into consideration more, more land. I mean, but a foot's a foot, a foot's a foot in Florida, a foot's a foot here. It's just, no matter how, no matter, no matter how, no matter how spread out you get, I mean, you're gonna, I mean, it's still, it's the same thing, isn't it?
Volume and velocity is the difference.
You're saying with a more restricted?
Exactly.
That's what I was trying to say, that it would take less to go up a foot in a restricted area than in a mountainous area.
So would it be safe to say in that, in that type scenario, in Florida, there would be more volume, but here, there's gonna be more velocity?
So velocity doesn't increase in correlation with volume?
True.
I mean, is there not a formula there?
He knows.
No, it's all about, you know, the grade of the channel comes into play. I mean, mountainous terrain, that's why things are so flashy around here, because we've got these high graded, you know, channels. And so things get up in a hurry and they go down in a hurry. So a foot in a, you know, a storm that's large enough to increase the level of flow a foot is screaming in the mountains. But if a storm that does that in the coastal plain, in Florida, is just, is just gonna be sluggish, moving around along, okay, we have plenty of time to get out of the way. Whereas here, they don't have that. But still, at the end of the day, when it, when the storm in Florida rained enough to increase that level of foot, is it not gonna be moving at the same speed as the increased level of a foot in the mountains?
No. I've seen that personally, because of the fog.
You go down in Little Tennessee River, it floods, and then you go up on Coliseum, leaving it more than water.
Gotcha. It's, it's great.
The water slows down when it hits flatland, so when floodwater comes roaring through my pasture, my hayfield, it actually deposited all the trout from somebody's trout pond upstream because it slowed down enough when the water moved on. They went down into my hayfield and we got 14 trout out of the hayfield.
Whereas on Buck Creek, that involves so much. But that's just about, it doesn't have floodway or flood zone. Anybody's a lot more than that. How many, did, in your floodplains and your floodways restricted though primarily to areas that are shaped to topography more like Florida? I mean, like in your Little Tennessee River basins or your?
Yeah, it spreads out where there's open.
I mean, I know there's not a floodplain on Burnetown Creek.
Yeah, they don't show it on the creek once they get up where they're flowing.
Right. So I guess, we see what I'm saying? Your soil types have something to do with it too. I mean, down on the coast, you got sand.
But I think the difference in Florida and here is if it backs up, before you get flooded, it backs up from town bridge all the way to Georgia line. Okay? Which to us would be a big difference for all that to be flooded up there. In Florida, you know, they, that would be insignificant to me, you know, because there's, you know, when that water gets up very much, the flat, it spreads out so much.
When it spreads out, it slows down. I think that's one of the areas.
I can't connect.
If, if it spreads out in the bottom lands here, it slows, slows it down.
I'm a seaman, I've admitted that. But no, what I'm saying is if it spreads out, I mean, maybe I'm not.
It's just like those burn hoses. You choke the hose down, it's coming out faster, you get the hose in, the rest is just coming out slow.
It's more velocity.
Yes, but, that assumes that you fill the exact same amount on each side of the stream. If you fill one side of the stream and not the other, it's not the same thing.
That FEMA did in their mapping type, both sides of the river.
So if we, if some person goes out there and fills one side of the stream and not the other, then this does not apply.
Well, one thing it may very well do is definitely push it against the opposite bank.
It could be, you're right, Jimmy, but what it, what it would be doing, then what you'd do is?
Lighten out on the other side.
Take all that and put it over here.
Now, you wouldn't take all of it. Well, I was just talking about that with the engineer, and you had to look at it three dimensionally, this engineer told me. And yeah, it may go over some, but not to the full extent of just move all the water up there.
Well, you can look at the map FEMA put out for town Franklin, and tell they don't understand anything.
I'll tell you, I don't understand.
They don't beg it?
Obviously don't.
I think it's really hard to understand all the dynamics of it, but I think it's pretty clear that if you drop a brick in a bucket of water, it overflows, it displaces that amount of water. And so, you know, we, we know that fill displaces water, and we know that fill speeds up.
But for what we're trying to do here, this really don't have anything to do with it. We're gonna allow fill, any FEMA allows it, then it's just a decision in county. Is that not right?
Let's get to that. Talk about what portions of the ordinance, uh, the, look at the Florida, uh, Florida, you got the same form.
Flood ordinance in Bay County.
Do you want to go directly to the section?
I will. Uh, just a second. First of all, look at page three. Anything that's been edited, it's got a box coming around inside, and what's been either deleted or added, and what's been added.
This is what we didn't appreciate.
This is the current ordinance with, after, after the county commissioners met and got the consensus that they want us to look at it. Chester and I sat down with Jack, Gordon and Jack Morgan, and so we came up with a list of what we thought they were looking at.
So this is what, this is what they're okay.
Right. And then the note on page three, it says deleted. This was in the original definitions in the current flood ordinance for fill, uh, fill third, which is everything that's in the definition now, and then after it says any development activity, the rest, what's deleted on the right-hand side was in there, that said material placed in or on top of the ground which is incidental to developmental activity will not be considered as fill. Incidental materials are defined as those located in the same parcel within a special flood hazard area and are necessary for driveways, parking areas, drains, culverts, and walls designed under any type of dry lines. And so there's similar improvements necessary for access to and occupation developments within this flood, flood hazard area. Basically, that definition was saying that we would allow driveway access to or any kind of incidental property.
But that those materials, that fill material have to come?
On the same parcel within the flood hazard area. So basically, you were balancing, if you put a hundred yards, moved a hundred yards dirt toward a driveway, it balanced up to the same.
But if it comes up on the hill, it comes on the hazard area.
So basically, this comes about a wash in this area.
It balanced because of the.
Right.
Now, let's flip over to, there's not many times. Page 10. You'll see under permit requirements, letter F, we deleted and added some stuff in here. A statement that no fill material or other development shall encroach into the floodway and that, or non-encroachment area of a water source. And that also had in there the special, the special flood hazard area, floodway or non-encroachment area. So that's where it said that you cannot fill in the floodplain. Talking with Chester, we looked at some FEMA guidelines and with Jack, and added the next sentence that's underlined, that says if fill materials are being placed in the floodplain during the development of a site, a conditional letter of map revision based on fill and a letter of map revision based on fill must be submitted to North County Emergency Management for approval. That's basically saying that if we allow fill in the floodplain, we're still gonna go through things process to get the maps revised based on fill. Um, flip over to page 11. Under D, that has all been added, that's underlined, that if fill material was to be allowed in the floodplain, if it's to be used in the floodplain, following requirements must be made. And we developed these five standards from the same document that, that we got, the CLO Mar definition program. Number one, material must be of good clean soil, free of large rocks, construction debris, organic dirt. Must be mechanically compacted to 95% of maximum density. Material must stand at least 10 to 15 feet beyond the footprint of the structure. Material must have graded side slopes that are not steeper than 201, and slopes must be protected against erosion. The final sentence down there says, design professional must certify that fill elevation, compaction, slope, slope protection measures in order to determine post-development, it will be reasonable to cycle flooding. And that, the design professional also has to be with the floodplain, that's something that. Let's keep going, make sure I'm missing anything. Page 16. That originally said placement of fill material shall be prohibited except in accordance with the pursuit of a plan approved by the Natural Resources Conservation Service or Soil Conservation Service, the USD edict for the purchases of conservation, streambank restoration, watershed protection, or further tailored implement installation of measures. And must be designed by an engineer and comply, comply with the Sedentation Ode control act. That language is already in the ordinance for streambank work and agriculture type work. We looked at Chester, I looked at that, and if fill was allowed to be into the floodplain, it would be changed to say placement of fill material of any nature must be designed by a licensed engineer and must comply with the Sedentation Ode Control Act. And I think that's it. I'm sure this job, again, will change it. I'm sure this speech will cover the changes. Yeah, Chester, Chester asked for us to send it to the North County Emergency Management Office, and wants to actually prove the original. They would have to approve any change immediately. And they want, Chester wanted to make sure that we complied or changed the ordinance, modified it with language similar to this, that it was still not inhibiting flood insurance or was actually leaving. And from what we've been told so far, we've not got an official letter, but what we've heard so far is everything, their culture, they're saying that that's, these things they allow in other counties.
If we allow fill in there, would the flood elevation change?
Yeah.
I mean, would it officially change?
The flood plain itself, area of the change, because flood is from here to here, it's probably, flood would not have to change. Now, how much would change elevation then?
Yeah. How many addresses?
That's the reason we've got, that's the conditional letter of map revision. That's where that's headed. That's their responsibility.
And it says you can change the base flood elevation by up to one foot.
Well, the map considers a one-foot safety, right?
So, so I can add enough fill, according to FEMA, I can add enough fill to change it by, by one foot?
Over one area.
I think that's in the mapping process, isn't it, Jack?
It is.
They've already, like your base elevation, you see on your map, is already set a foot higher, because they're saying, okay, your building's.
That's our safety factor.
That's your one-foot safety factor. It's already in the map.
Okay.
Now, we also require structures to be built two feet above that base flood elevation.
This does?
Yes.
I never could understand that. Why didn't you do two feet above? That would already be fluid.
That's an insurance, that's more of an insurance break, it breaks at two feet. If you build below its base elevation, your insurance, average insurance is like $3,000 a year. If you're at base flood, it's like $2,000. One foot above is $1,500, and typically, if I were to give myself $300, it's, it's eighty. And that's, we use it, we use it day to day more as a tool for people in new construction to say, you know, let's think about this. And you're gonna be required, especially with lending money now from banks, you're gonna be paying for insurance. And they actually appreciate.
Do they have an option though, if they're going to pay the average insurance, if it's down?
No. Because it'll affect everybody. The only, the only people that have a foot, uh, the option would be people inside the city limits in Franklin, because they don't have a foot ordinance. And the building code covers that with a one-foot base flood above base flood elevation.
So is that change, we're struggling with, does that change in base flood elevation that they're saying one foot? Is that only being determined for that property?
No, it's entire county.
For the, so you could put enough fill to raise the base flood elevation for the entire county by a foot, and then the next person who puts in fill and raises it another foot? Okay, just checking.
I want your hour.
Just, because it seems like it incrementally raises it by a foot.
No, you're, it's, it's everything. And then you've got to think too, like Timmy said, three dimensionally, once you're above that mark, you're always above. That's, out is out.
Now, if you fill at this table, each foundation of elevation, you fill at this table, it wouldn't matter if you filled it to the moon.
Right.
But in the mapping, they did count it one. They figured it in.
What we, I think what we probably would have served, what we've done in the past, is just go start with the first one, you go through each change and make sure everybody's comfortable with it and all.
Can I ask a question about that? If, if we're going to do this, do we have to do all of them to get what we want to make?
All these changes?
Yes.
I hope you would.
So why do we need to go through each individual one? I mean, if you're.
To do, if, to let people fill in the floodplain, we'd have to make all of these changes in the proposal.
You could just make part of it.
No, I think, I think you better, the five that I've brought out there are pretty standard practices for fill floodplain in every other situation.
So if we're planning on doing that, we would have to change all of them?
All five.
Yeah, I think so.
I don't think it was addressed with Matt's review there with the county plan was what would be affecting, get about fill.
So basically, we need to go through all five of these, discuss whatever we want to discuss and boil down all five at one time, instead of each one, because it's something to do.
We're gonna have to leave them all there. I was gonna have to be with that.
Let's just, let's go through each one of them.
Can I ask Matt a question first?
Sure.
Matt, what is your opinion of filling in the floodplain? Have you seen any adjustments to help safety in the federal county?
Well, I'm not a county commissioner.
Not that you are a county commissioner.
I see both sides of it. You are a county commissioner.
Good answer.
There's, there, it would tend to be a public safety issue.
But what would be the amount of fill that would actually create a public safety issue? I mean, just like we were just talking about the one-foot elevation, we're talking about moving the whole Daggett Mountain into all 6,000 acres of the floodplain to make that kind of adjustment, to bring the creek up to one foot. We're not talking about filling on one piece of property scattered through the whole floodplain and making a difference.
One piece of property or 50 pieces of property is not going to fade. It's, you know, down the road, how many years from now, you potentially fade. I mean, that's, that's true, you potentially fade.
But let me give you an example, that's about East Franklin and a fill in Mid-Donald Village. And when FEMA brought out the new maps for East Franklin, the base flood elevation came down.
Four feet.
That's a, I'm not lying to you.
That's the same map that we showed being seven, a seven-foot water.
From there where the East Franklin, that's in a, it's leanest elevation, there came down four feet.
Well, you know, it's gotta be, it can't come down any basis on what I saw in that thing, six and five or whatever. I'm just a boy, but I can remember that.
That's why I'm telling you, FEMA don't know what they're doing. They don't understand their maps.
Now, that mapping was based on LiDAR imagery, is that right here? So it's still, it's still just as inaccurate as a LiDAR imagery is?
I'd say it's.
And it's the most accurate tool available. So it's inaccurate to 20 feet. Is that right? Isn't that what the board says? The board says we can't use it.
Yeah.
Well, in, in reference to those maps, from what I gathered and being in question with FEMA guys and everybody else that I could, because I was personally affected by that, there, there was elevations taken. And the more you get from all this, the more you're taking. But there was, there was elevations on the ground taken. So I think, and this is my opinion, but in the more correct, I think there was some accurate data. But what the problem was, and the FEMA guy admitted it, or he appeared to admit it to me, was there was issues with the program that they were feeding those elevations into that, that gave the flood areas in town or Franklin. So I think, I think more, you know, the FEMA voting maps, I don't know that the elevations and the data that was collected to, to get those elevations, I don't know that that is some pretty good data.
Right.
But they gave us some numbers about how much work was done on the ground. But they openly admitted that, given, and there was specifically on Crawford Branch and the number of pipes and blah, 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 that all of those things didn't get accounted for perhaps as accurately as it should have in the, in that program.
I was just trying to get an idea for the accuracy of that blue line drawn on that.
There's two sections, there's two detailed studies. One's a detailed study where it was surveyed on the ground, and there's a limited detailed study where they didn't, where development wasn't growing, they didn't put as much time on the ground.
They did send survey crews out in some areas, crossroads and creek banks, spot check, a lot of their data.
So those detailed studies?
They did do it on everything.
The detailed studies were done on Little Tennessee, right?
Uh, they were done on portions of Little Tennessee, up, down to about 400,000. And, uh, some sagey portions, they, they don't have funding for so many linear feet. And the county had to sit down with them and decide we didn't want to do that. And at that time, we tried to take out the areas where most of them were stoned. That's how that ended up.
Crawford Branch and East Franklin were areas that we looked at for?
Well, that was town, we didn't have, they didn't even identify it at all. Now, we'd like that right now, that was a different contractor did town Franklin, that was the county. I don't know if I'm misunderstanding.
But what did, did any of these people do?
From your experience, have those, the counting maps, especially where the detailed studies were done, do they seem pretty accurate?
Much better than you wanted.
Carl, didn't you just say they did not use that data because it didn't work with the software or something?
Well, they, they used all the elevations there. The issue was, is part of, the way I understood it, part of what they did was, once they put all the elevations in, then they put out everything in, there's, you know, a five-foot by five-foot cord that's 125 feet long in this area, that was put in the program. Then, you know, you went 600 linear feet, and I'm making these numbers up, up the creek, and there was a, you know, a 72-inch gallonized drain, and, and, except on and off. And from what, the way I understand it, the program had a harder time, with the data that the program put out after putting that data in, was not as accurate as it, because it could be.
You're talking 10.
I'm talking 10.
You're talking 10.
Has anybody with, and is it, first of all, are we ready, I mean, are we still talking about the li, I had a question that was not related to LiDAR.
So we've kind of got stopped, right?
I was just trying to talk about accuracy of the map.
Right, yeah, yeah.
I was, we're talking about a line on a, on a plat, I'm wondering how accurate that line on a plat.
Yes.
And I, I just, I had a question that was a little bit different, and Matt's an expert in this subject, can answer it. Is there a, is there a possibility that if I went and filled in the floodplain on my property, that I could render Joe Deal's property that he farms on useless, that he makes his living off of?
Certainly it's valuable, I think, I don't worry about useless.
Or, I'm saying a certain portion, not the whole thing. Could I put, could I fill in, on my property and render some of the land that Joe Deal makes his living off of useless?
Like, the fact that you can't fill on your property, maybe like your property, that's not even, but I see, you know, yeah, there's a left side, there's both sides.
If you, if you had how much you filled, then. If you had 10 acres and you filled it 10 feet, you can imagine what it would do to the whole area that you're talking about.
If you look at this map, most property lines, I can picture, say, the, you know, the stream or the river or whatever is pretty much a property line. So I'm sitting here and I fill my, or I'm gonna fill my property from some distance so I can build, say, three feet, 10 feet, or whatever. That's gonna push, as soon as the property's saying on both sides of the stream, that's gonna push the water over Lewis.
Not all of it.
If it was, if it were Lewis.
It's gonna push some of it over there. And I guess, at what point, how do you manage that? How do you manage that now? I guess that's what I'm not really clear about.
I don't fill in the floodplain.
Why, I see big fill, though, I'm sure it's got to be in some of the floodplain. I don't know that you really push it on Lewis, I think you're changing the base flood elevation by some number, which then overflows on Lewis because that base flood elevation changes.
Okay.
Well, what if I'd had my grandfather build a barn here 50 years, 100 years ago, they had a flood, and then the neighbor's creek fills up, next thing, next big two, three inch rain, I've got water halfway in my barn.
You never put that much dirt in.
Well, it's CLO Mar.
But I think the thing is more.
Or it has to be a source.
It's more incremental, I think it's more incremental than we're talking, that, you know, you could look at any particular piece, and that piece of fill is maybe going to make a very small difference, and then the next piece of fill makes a very small difference. But over time, the difference becomes substantial. And I think that when we're looking at an ordinance, you can't just look at the effect of one action, you have to look at the effects. If that's your law, then you could, you know, you let this person fill, and the next person can fill, and the next person can fill, and that cumulative effect can be very major.
I just asked Jack if the CLO Mar statement would take this into consideration, the possibility that Lewis's grandfather's barn might get flooded when his neighbor comes in. And that, and I agree with what you said, you've got just as much strife on your property because it's less valuable. And I'm just trying to find the common ground. But if, if that doesn't take that into effect, that CLO Mar statement, the effect it can have on other properties, it just affects where it moves the flood. But if, if, that doesn't take that into effect, that Clomar statement, um, the effect it can have on other properties, it just affects where it moves the, the floodplain to. Um, I mean, but that's something, and, and then again, if I'm coming in here now and I'm buying, it's gonna be less valuable to Lewis in the floodplain. Whereas, but if I've already had property in the floodplain, I could get, surely get more money out of it if it wasn't the floodplain.
But you bought it.
When you think about, when you think about what you're talking about, though, think about how much field has been done on Lewis, you see, on East Franklin, and what it's done to the, to change. But that, I haven't said that they've been any worse. There's been a lot of field putting out rivers since sixty-four.
Well, they said sixty-four was, that's supposed to be a hundred-year flood or something like that?
Yeah.
So you know, we're, we've probably not had as much water in that period of time.
We have.
Yes, but, but we are gonna have to.
Flooded in, what, oh, four.
I think it was.
And it didn't, uh, it wasn't as high as our East Franklin.
It was-
It wasn't, it wasn't. He didn't do that in sixty-four. I think it's where you're at on the river, and I think a lot of these questions are very difficult to answer.
How about flood insurance? Do you call me to have to get flood insurance when I didn't originally have to have it?
Well, that's one question I have. The other question is, okay, if we change this and change all that, is everybody that's got flood insurance, is their rates flooded up?
By the way, I understand that this ordinance is a little bit more restricted than the, uh, example ordinance of the state.
Well, we're changing the flood elevation.
But what it comes down to, I think, is, is if we change this ordinance, is it better for making county, to make the county be a better place?
No.
Because of, or would it not?
No.
I think that's what you've got to think about.
That, they're, they're dating, yeah.
Yeah.
And I think, I think the key component of what I'm hearing is, while if Susan fills a half acre, it, it, chances are it, it may not hurt Lewis. If it does, it might not be noticeable. But when Jack fills, five years from now, fills two acres, net down the creek or close to, then the flood comes through, then Lewis probably will recognize that a little more. And, and when, and Marth fills two acres, then depending on where Jack and Susan fill to what elevation, they could fill up that to that. So I think, I think, you know, it's hard, it's, it's hard to sit here and, and think about filling a, a one acre parcel on whatever, in whatever floodplain, you know, and, and what that effect will have. While that might not be substantial, you know, I think we need to, could, the one thing that, that what I'm hearing, what we need to consider is just how is that one times one times one times one times two, you know, a little bit all along? Because I, I can't imagine that we would see somebody come in and fill thirty acres in the floodplain. But what you're gonna see, or what has happened in the past, and, and probably if you open it up, it's gonna happen again, is, is you will see those small fields done. And then over time, then, then that's when you're gonna start, everybody along that creek.
Well, it's impact probably will increase exponentially at some point, maybe twenty or thirty years. So it's, my life's high baker, you know, it's like suddenly it's water, water everywhere, I think. While a high baker today doesn't make much difference. Well, that's how, I, I don't know what to answer.
Well, that's like when we get dog courses, I mean, I've been through more stormwater facing down the peril than people can imagine. And the thing, when they designed like a three eight, three thousand acre project, river of the valley is always the joke, it's the dog course, I don't know, you're smart. Well, they designed in a built-out state. In other words, they look twenty, thirty years down, and as you pave and develop and everything else, their body of velocity comes in, you melt faster. So what's happening today with development ten years from now is going to increase body velocity.
I mean, we, we already, we know that the more impermeable surfaces you have, the more roofs, the more parking lots, there's a lot more runoff, less infiltration, and that water levels rise more quickly, uh, when it's not going in, is basically what Lewis is saying. And that's gonna only increase in the future.
Well, the last big rain we had, the farm I grew up on, we saw the storm water level come up higher than we've ever seen. Yeah.
And we're also having more powerful storms, you know, so that you get more rainfall at a single time, it's harder to channel to accommodate it, it's runoff, parking lots, it's coming down faster, water levels go up faster. And again, that's only going to move more.
Well, God chose water to store it in the earth the first time. And he made a wise choice.
Well, I know that flood levels have increased somewhat because, uh, my father built it.
Call it, don't write that.
It's gonna look very strange.
Such a good quote there. That was biblical and deep, man.
Re- reverent.
Develop, I mean, I agree, development, you know, is stagnant right now. But I mean, if you think about it, like, if they'd said, hey, you can go, you can go on vacation in Cuba now, that's the first place I'd wanna go, Cuba. Because it's been blocked off, and now you can do it, and the property's beautiful, and it's right on the river. So people are gonna go there. I mean, if development ever comes back around. But I mean, at the same time, you know, is that a good thing or a bad thing? You know, Joe, homeowner, sells his land, makes a good profit. I mean, I like low taxes and making the income. So it's a, it's a balance.
But we do a lot of construction in the floodplain now. There's a lot of houses constructed in the floodplain, but they have to be raised so that the floodwaters pass under them.
Dirt has to come off the bed of property.
Pardon?
And the dirt has to come off the bed of property.
Yeah, it has to come from the, but I mean, there's a lot, they usually do, you can raise them up on the doors, but there's all kinds of divisions about how you, you build. I mean, we are not, we've not said you can't build in the floodplain, and people do build in the floodplain. There's a lot of houses that have been built in the floodplain. We just say you can't fill. And I think the, the thing to look at, when we're looking at the floodplain, and I'm quoting my biologist husband on this, you could regulate what you do in a lot of, a lot of ways on a floodplain. But if you fill it, it's no longer a floodplain. Uh, you basically, it is not floodplain unless it's filled. So the functions it serves, whether they're natural functions, whether it's slowing the water down so you don't erode the neighbor's property, once it's filled, those functions are gone.
So you're saying basically that a property would be any more marketable or any more valuable if you could fill it in the floodplain?
I mean, there could be some situations, maybe somebody wants to fill it, to build their house, but we haven't told them, we've said you can build your house, you just have to raise it above flood level, and you have to let water pass through underneath and that sort of thing. If you wanna build by the river, you can, but you just can't fill it.
Most of the fillings we've done in the floodplains will be for commercial purposes.
Yeah, you're-
You don't go away and commercial build.
So it would mean there won't be that much of a house.
I'd be interested to see what Asheville has on the books. They just admitted that New Belgium Brewery down there, right on the river.
But it's an existing elevation that's been there for hundreds of-
They just took that old stock yard.
They just leveled the stock yard and put the building on it.
But I mean, that was a two hundred thousand square foot facility.
But they didn't change the floodplain, they didn't fill anything.
They didn't fill it. Does Bunkin County allow building floodplain?
No.
Bunkin County does not?
No.
What county's close to us, dude?
Jackson, Cleveland, everyone's real.
Really, not us?
We're the only ones. I've been for years.
Jackson lets you build a floodplain?
The thing is, is there any way to find out if there's been any detrimental effect in that something? And that would be a good place to look because their topography is a lot like ours.
We could ask their planner for his opinion.
That'd be nice.
Their, uh, their topography is a lot steeper than ours. There's not much level land being Jackson.
Yeah. So I mean, they'd be affected more by the fill of the floodplain than the other.
And I'd like to ask their county planners if they've seen any detrimental effect over that legislation, if it's applied there.
The new ten million dollar development is going over there on the Colosseum River, the developer chose to exceed the setbacks.
I appreciate that.
Mm-hmm.
The developer chose, I appreciate it.
Yeah. Of the hundred counties in North Carolina, how many are more restricted than the FEMA campus? Deep to deep, or?
There's, was it the, the community that exists, or actually, I, I would-
We've got different situations here in the mountains, what they got down, feet on the coast.
Well, I can't say that, uh, just sitting here talking, but I don't have enough information. I would not make any attempt whatsoever on this task.
I'll make anybody's intent to, yeah. But you are.
I'm not. I, I think we need more information before we make any decisions on this.
Let's, let's go back to the changes that's gone through, and, and have us a list of stuff, as we all have to do, to make to, and thank you all.
Thank you.
Yeah, that I'd like to write to my investors.
Look, I'm gonna, I'm sure I'll get a quick picture. I mean, I know that my nearest tree might even be concerned about floodplain, floodway, all that stuff. Supposedly I'm by this table here, this lot, across the street from Lewis, we're pretty, across the creek from Lewis, pretty much same elevation. And I couldn't see, you won't know about fill. How do you decide whether I'm in the floodplain or floodway or whatever to that?
Um.
You got a map, you can-
Three G I isolators. So you can have an example of our earlier.
Okay.
She had requested one for wetting out Wells Grove Church. And the blue is the fill, and it's the floodplain, the purple is the floodway.
Blue, the light blue?
Right. And then we go out with our, uh, tremble unit, uh, G I S units, and we'll delineate those lines on the ground as kind of the line.
All right.
So basically, that blue line is right there, it's, right there. We stayed that line at Wells Grove Church, and they filled everything from that line to the road. So there's no fill in the floodplain.
And then if you went out, and you looked at a site, and you thought maybe what was shown on the map was not totally right, can you then change your statement or change your response based on what you see on the map?
Floodplain, I'm sure it has.
So, so if there's an inaccuracy in the map, and you say, oh, actually, the, you know, this is what it should be, you have that. So once somebody asks you for a permit, they're not gonna be tempered by the inaccuracy of the map that you did fill it.
If we find enough that-
Yeah.
Reasons to. Of course, yes, well, uh, state grants, I mean, I have a floodplain, I say that on the line, I was about to add, according to the map, it's here. According to FEMA, any portion of the house in the floodplain is not, so it's happened, it's happened, so according to the map, there have been elevations achieving this here. You have to have a letter of an active vision for this to be considered a move in the floodplain, or set up a floodway, or set up a flood standard. It would have to be, it's not recorded on the state offices. We got a revision or a thing.
I think it would be really useful for us to hear formally from the watershed council, some of the watershed council members that developed this ordinance. I mean, Barry was here and spoke briefly, but I think they could do, you know, they could, they could answer a lot of our questions and explain how they got their network. I know Bob Wright is very interested, and he's, he's willing to come. He was the chair of the Little Town Waters. I know Bob Wright is very interested, and he's, he's willing to come. He was the chair of the Little Town Waters.
I'm thinking, you know, coming home to know that.
Obama's boss, sure.
Obama's boss, sure.
He was.
I don't think it would not be welcome.
You don't call.
So just to remind your statement, for clarification, who is the watershed council, and what are they comprised of, and how do they have input into the ordinance?
Derek County, I, I was the planning board liaison to the watershed council. I don't know legally how a council differs from a board, but the watershed council was appointed by the board commissioners to deal with watershed issues. And so when we looked at the floodplain ordinance, it went to the watershed council. And, uh, it was its accounting appointed.
I think you still advise for, I don't believe.
It's an advisory group.
Can I ask Mr. Tate a question? You all gave this to the planning board, you didn't give it back to the watershed council. Did you want us to do it, or did you want them to do it?
We gave it to the planning board, we're talking about hiring, I'm gonna go see our attorney, go see the watershed council, go see anybody you need to, if there's determination, so. Y'all ask, y'all, y'all will as unanimous, y'all consent, the judge, they're in the, they're gonna get it.
I don't think, I don't think-
Who's the watershed council comprised of? That's what I'm trying to understand.
The, uh, to add to this, there was an agreement between commissioners of the Upper Colosseum Watershed Association and the Tennessee Watershed Association. They formed a group. Individual membership are not included by the commissioners.
Okay, okay. The commissioners agreed to form the council within the, they chose their own members.
It's a good question.
No, we do.
And if, you know, if, if the board, as, if we, if we're discussing this, if we have any specific questions or have a need for them to come and advise us on something, then, you know, we can request that to be. Does that answer your question, do you all, or what?
Well, I guess, I'm just trying to understand, I guess, if the watershed councils, when you can talk to us, I need some, I just want some understanding, and maybe they can tell them when they're here. I mean, are they comprised of Upper Colosseum Watershed and L T L T, or are they some other entity, or, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out who, who they are and what they represent, if they're special interest or not special interest, and kind of the big picture.
Leave your coffee to the bow, the original bow.
But the commissioners had to approve the, the regional watershed.
Yeah, they did.
Floodplain ordinance.
I think it was on the board.
No, it wasn't the commissioner then, but, but anyway, they, they are just advisory board.
Yeah, they're advisors.
So we can, we can draw on them if we need to, since we don't.
Gerald Green, uh, the planning director over in Jackson County, and see if he would come speak to us, if they don't have these, um, regulations in effect, uh, to the extent we do, and see what, if it's had an impact on Jackson County, if that's something you want to look into, or something you'd like to have me do, or check into, I can do that. I talk to him pretty frequently. Jackson County plan. Yeah, I would like that.
That's a good one.
Well, whether it's the watershed council or whether it's a hydrologist from somewhere else, I think we need to hear from somebody who understands the hydrology about it. And we have Calida lab here, Jason Love, who spoke, is from Calida. Barry worked at Calida for many years. Um, and, uh, I'm sure that they would recommend the hydrologists to be able to answer some of these questions for us.
I would, I would, I would. Sorry.
What about you?
I was gonna say, if, you know, not to the word of the point, if we have a question, and we need somebody to address it, that'll come out during each discussion. But, but I, I don't think, I think I feel safer speaking to Mark, he don't wanna hear them unless we got some questions, so. So, and I think we're all that way, you know, if we move through this, if we got a question, if we feel like they have a level of expertise and they can add something, then, you know.
Correct, correct me if I'm wrong, what, what we're trying to decide here is it make the county's best interest that we let them fill in the floodplain, as, as it's stated here? And if it is, we think it is, that's what I think, we don't think it's our, the county's best interest. You know, everything you do in the county affects some people more than it does others. So I think you have to look at the whole thing and see, are we gonna be better off if we allow this than if we don't? And, uh, to me, that's the question we need to answer.
And it may, you know, everybody's gonna have a different couple level in answering that question, you know, they get coming to that conclusion, and some, it might take, you know, maybe ready to do that now, some might need a whole lot more time, so. But I think that'll come out, is, you know.
But, but I don't think we need to understand what two acres of fill here is gonna do to the floodplain. I, I, I don't know that we're capable of understanding that.
I, I think the reason why I was asking for that kind of information is if we don't know the effect the fill's gonna have, then it's hard to make a, then it just come, I mean, we, either if we agree to fill- Then it just come, I mean, we, either if we agree that field's gonna raise water level and increase flooding downstream and do property damage to the people who own, who, who it's going in on. And then, okay.
Well, think about this.
But we have to, you have to, you can't say it's not gonna have the effects.
In nineteen sixty-four, I remember this place very well. And I know how much field's been put on that riverbank. You know, I thought that's sixty year, fifty, fifty something years.
Basically, say a couple of miles upstream.
And I don't think things down the canyon, below Lake Emery Dam are anywhere short of today because of. And I know things of four forty-one, Georgia, nothing worse off.
But I wonder if you ask some of the people about their property.
Well, I've seen the floods since and I know what it does.
Well, I have too.
Now, there's the question.
Did you see them in sixty-four?
No, I didn't see them in sixty-four, but I've seen them for the last thirty years.
We're never gonna get anywhere unless we should go back to the document, go back to the check, let's call it, we're gonna sit here and write this and have this general discussion.
I was gonna say one thing about that and I'm not gonna say anything else. If, if we, we can't change one of these things, if I'm right, if we change it, we're gonna have to change all of these ones.
I think that's probably what I'm saying.
So that's why I'm saying going to them one at a time is just wasting time.
You're saying the field or not?
That's the only.
That's it. That is the question.
But I don't think you can leave out what's on page ten.
I love you, Derek.
One thing I've thought about is you.
Don't bring that.
No field, you've got field. If you're a medium somewhere in the point.
Well, allow certain amount of people?
Yeah, it'd be complicated.
There's not gonna be that much field done. Your future, if it needs changing in the future, there needs to be a lot of it, so you might have to go back and think about it.
I don't think it's good. I mean, good doctors, much land from San Juan, you don't have to go down to the, and spend that extra money.
So I don't mind what you do from trying that, ten years from now, it might be.
The only people who affect right now is the people actually out in. There's gonna be expansion, you know.
Well, what Joe Deal says, unless it's important.
Yeah, and at the same time though, like Susan said, it's about flooding people's land, but at the same time, I think it's about, what if the. And one of those data storage facilities wants to locate here that is required to be by water, that's gonna put three hundred people where, I mean, let's say. You know, or, you know, technology, technol, it's not, it's not gonna be industrial, but technology and this, like, something like that, I mean. What if it wants to locate there and then you say, okay, you know, I mean, you got three hundred people going to work in, I mean.
But do they have to go?
That's good for the county.
Why would they have to go to the flood?
They have to be close to water. Substantial for it close to water.
So what are they gonna do with that water?
Cool, cool the data.
And so then we're gonna heat up the entire Tennessee River and change the entire ecology of the river?
Susan, they take water out of the river.
It's preferably, it's public water.
Yeah, I, I think it's a much higher probability they're gonna.
Google it.
Public water. Steady water. I think, you know, you start bringing in river water, I think it'll take issue. They don't even need that much water, but I mean.
They ain't gotta be drinking water, probably playing off some computer.
But you gotta, you don't want them wanting to be fresh food, so you go to the road to the town.
Hope they don't have to ride outside, too.
That'd be an extent of the city limit, so that's a little private water.
Matt, can you run HECS? I mean, you know how software works? So can you, can you give us an example? I mean, let's fill fifty acres in a floodplain and see what it does.
I think Lamar's right, I think the only thing that's gonna make that. Immediate impact would be some sort of commercial thing, you know, they're all, my high factor that I might wanna fill a bunch of.
There's a lot of possibility for variance in that.
Even, even.
I don't know.
I don't know.
Here, it might have a critical difference in that.
I gave you that money.
Floodplain of that river, see, you know, it's a long. And it might be a long way.
They have a good speed here, but.
Like I say, you can look back at this one again, but this can be.
So you're, you're discounting the cumulative effects and the fact that we can look at it later if it's hard to solve the city.
That's what I'm thinking.
And to save my face on that comment I made, you're not gonna find an area of land large enough if it's not in the floodplain to put a facility that would employ three hundred people.
Phrase it like that if you don't mind.
It's pretty rotten, aren't they gonna be? I don't think I'm gonna phrase it, Jackson, don't listen. He's just hoping we're gonna adjourn pretty quick, so, so we don't have to leave during the meeting. We might.
I wish we had a cold beer here.
So do we need EDC to talk to us about values, property for commercial development?
Yeah.
Well, I don't think, you know, I think you got, you start making a. You start making investments, like on Google, I'm gonna have any million dollars that is, probably a hundred million or a hundred fifty million or something like that. You're not gonna put that where any chance it's gonna flood, you're gonna go to another county where they got plenty of lake.
If you feel.
Yeah, but think about how much it's gonna cost a field attractor or building that big.
That's another thing that I was gonna say. Ain't gonna be a whole lot of field, but it costs a lot.
Well, another example, you say that floodplains are devalued, when you look at what they want to pay for the Parker Meadows property, and it's in the floodplain now, what is it, thirteen, fifteen thousand an acre?
I think it's way over there.
I think you.
I'm way over there.
But it's there.
Any property is what it is.
Political side.
If the floodplain isn't devalued, that's what it is.
What, what if the.
Yeah.
Yes, the part of that is more at risk. There's about more than ninety miles at risk. And just like you said, with population, they'll do that if fields were to. So, so looking at it from Lamar's standpoint, the bottom line, is it gonna make, make the county better for life to live? You know, is it prudent to have, you know, just listen to what Joe Deal had to say and listen to the recommendation of having some value for economic development? Is that, is that stuff that we want to, to listen to?
Well, frankly, I'm offended that we would want to just look at the economic development while rejecting any opinion from hydrologists or people who would know the actual facts. What we're basically saying is that if there's short-term gain, great, go for it. So, I mean, I'm perfectly happy to listen to the EDC, but I think it's kind of odd to say less than listen to the EDC and less than listen to any hydrologists.
No, I can't listen to hydrologists, but I hope you bring some numbers with you.
Yeah, I hope you bring.
And if he puts two hundred acres in the floodplain, what does that affect with the base flood elevation in the basin? Cause there's sixty seven, over sixty seven hundred acres in the basin.
I think, and I think that's a problem that we're all.
And this is.
To, to, because you can't, if you could draw it out on the board right here and say, I'm gonna dump seventy-five thousand loads of dirt in here and it's gonna do this somewhere else. Then I would have a whole lot easier time saying, yeah or no.
Yeah, but you can't, you can't get your arms around that, except for very isolated.
And it's just not gonna happen that way.
And that's why it's gonna be hard, I think, for those folks to come in and be able to talk to us at that level, if that's the level we're looking at.
You want.
Be able to communicate.
You want to know what you did on that basis?
Yeah, I personally would rather see real world incidences of how somebody filled a flood, floodplain and caused other people problems. Not, you, you come ahead and throw science and numbers and all that stuff at it, and it's just science and numbers, okay? But when it comes to real world, you know, somebody actually filled a lot here and they pushed all the water over on that lot, that's a whole different problem.
But if you're talking permanently, it's, it's just not that black and white, you know? You can't say that this one thing did, it's the, we've, we've, you know, we've pretty well established that it's the cumulative effect.
Well, it's just like Lamar said, let's discount the cumulative effects and if we start seeing problems, we're gonna step back and see.
What's your problem now?
There, there are the problems.
It's, what, what I think.
They go.
I think what you need to consider is if, if the county decides to allow seven floodplains, you might consider all of it is up for grabs. I don't think that would happen, but you couldn't predict it.
You could have laid it there.
You're still gonna have the issues twenty years from now, if you tell five odd land today for two thousand dollars acre across the floodplain and then relax the rule a little bit, then you try to. Right when I'm getting ready to sell to Google, Derek. And, you know, we start trying to change the rule back, you know, I mean, you gotta think about a lot of things, it's not black and white in any front right now.
Well, I do think we need to be proactive, not reactive, I think, just from the outside, that's been, there's been history here, being reactive is, it seems like we need to be more proactive.
Well, it's a lot easier to be reactive though, you think about whether, whether your planning board or Lexi Fisher, whoever you are, I think, considering putting out fires and that would be a thing.
At that training workshop that we went to in Asheville, it's probably one of the things, they said that whenever you're thinking of making a change, think about it as if it applied to everybody. Not as if it applied to the thing that stimulated you to consider that change. And so, I mean, I think that's basically what, what we're, what you're saying, Jack, that you have to, we can't think, well, this one can do it, this can do it, and then it makes, it's, it's something we can change. You're supposed, if you're changing a regulation, you're supposed to think that it then applies to everybody.
Matt, is there any situation today that is relevant to this, it's home level sale, the development, this property, and the geology?
On sale. The, the Wellsville Baptist Church is an issue.
What's the issue there?
They're open to fill up. What I was told is they're open to rebuild the church where the Noah was at. And use that for parking. Do they need to build a floodplain and do what they need to? Oh, it's not, the parking can still be in the floodplain. This wouldn't be a big question. It would, I'll be like.
Right.
About the guy that called from the. It's up somewhere, from TBJ?
So it's retaining law?
Yeah.
We had a guy start retaining law, go to invoke C law with our building permits that's in the floodplain. Right now, we're going to have to tear it down. Because it. There's no revision orders until after.
Parker Meadows' potential property?
Parker Meadows doesn't.
Potential.
If, if, if the county was to purchase it and implement the plan that's, the preliminary plan it is right now, we can do it without, and, without my final.
If Louis been in the body, gonna build, can't fund it, they don't have to, something like that.
The residences are a different family.
They're not still built there.
You could build it. You could build it on steel.
Yeah, was that whole Parker Meadows property in the floodplain?
Not the entire property, um, probably I'd say that for a little.
It was an ice off board. How is it?
Yeah, and if Louis wanted to buy Parker Meadows and build some vision, uh, it would, if you raised him up, he'd party the car here and it's.
Approximately, how many parcels of land in Bay County are in, like, had a portion of their property as floodplain?
I don't know parcels on it, but they.
Right, I saw that two percent of the entire county.
Two percent. Two, two and a half percent is in a flood hazard area, two percent is in floodplain. And then those numbers didn't include unmarked areas.
Would there be one parcel missing?
Right, which would be foresters, which makes up.
We didn't spend money.
Right, but that makes up fifty percent of the entire county.
Not, not to it.
So you're right, so when you're looking numbers, the number is probably closer to one percent.
Of the developed land.
Of the land.
Of the land, fortunately.
Of property.
Probably.
So if we all listen, Macon County, what happens if, and Swain County doesn't have the regulations, is that right? So what happens if they fill all in the Little Tennessee Basin in Swain County? So we care as.
Swain County might have floodplain all the time, but.
Well, Swain County, the Tennessee rivers in the National Conservancy or whatever, they're not gonna be filling us to flood us out anyway, if you look at it that way.
Can I make a motion that we move this to the next meeting, cause we're gonna talk at the end of this meeting, or what?
I think we need to just beat the law and keep beating it. It's dead, but we'll keep beating it. I think that's what we're enjoying.
Our homework for him.
We're gonna get this pay raise.
Uh, it's in there. Is, is there any consensus of anybody that we want to ask to come and speak to?
I would like to just ask if we could get the county chairman of Jackson County just to give us a, give Matt a letter or verbal or whatever, about what's going on in Jackson County and let Matt bring that out to us. If y'all want the guy to come talk to us, that's great, too.
Yours was detrimental effects of field and floodplain.
Yes, for the Jackson County.
We need the Jackson County doctor to go out and say that we did.
So there's gonna be a lot of pressure to do. Cherokee County's had it a long time.
Well, Matt's been told us all the western North Carolina counties are live filling floodplains except for us.
I'm not sure about, or the city, right? City, the city got.
I'm talking about camps, you know, just camps. So we're the only county in Asheville West that does not live filling floodplain.
So what happens if we fill the floodplain, frankly, what's that do outside? Do we go all the way?
There are. It's what, that's what's gonna happen, time frames, but floodplain again. You need, you need to log it on that, see if you can get that spot. Do we want the EDC to come speak? Do we want a, something, a statement from the EDC with their opinion?
Statement.
Statement, so, just a statement from the EDC. I think it would be helpful to have a statement. And Joe Deal makes a valid statement, it might be helpful to have a statement for, on their, if they have any objection, if they have. I think that the EDC will weigh a couple of things. Everybody, is anybody here? Everybody here?
Is there a way, I mean, I, I can see that a count, but I'm just gonna give a little, how many parcels does that thing?
I can find it, we've got that. Parcels in the flood hazard area?
Yeah, I just, I just wondered how, I mean, you know, we're looking at two percent of Macon County that we're talking about. How many, how many individual, how many property rights are we talking about?
Two percent total, but four percent of property held.
Roughly, yes. But, you know, a lot of the tracks.
That being.
Those tracks along the waterway probably have been subdivided places better.
I would think bigger track.
Twenty, thirty acres.
Except if you got a farm down there, it's thirty acres. It's just a bird eye.
Can you lose a lot of floodplains to watershed? What should they look like? Count?
Land trust.
How is that figured in the two percent or four percent?
That was. We consider that their acreage.
It's being a part of four percent.
The one, a little like thousands.
Is there any way to come back with that number almost they do?
And the.
Well, they don't, per se, they hold it.
They hold it easy and it's hard to track, a lot of it, uh, so if they don't outright.
Yeah.
A lot of it is ancient times, so.
But they're kind of like.
Well, it's all about, I think, they've been vacant for.
They don't.
Well, they don't, they don't.
Probably, they're not proud of the owner, it can be subdivided, it can't be. Both that, power company, like thirty two hundred acres of Swain County.
The property owners who have an easement can still sell their property, develop their property. I've got an easement conservation reserve on my property. I can sell it, I don't.
Matt, there are, um, there are ways to, to.
Yeah.
Sure, protesters here, so.
You, you, what Lamar's talking about, it'd look like it's two.
Point is best for Macon County, preserving, conserving our natural resources and looking at property, I mean, there's got to be somewhere in the middle. Can you research that and see what other places are doing to try to meet somewhere down the middle, as opposed to being black and white? down the middle, as opposed to being black and white?
I was looking at one yesterday, and I, for some reason, county won't let me get on the internet, but. I'll send it to you, but it was, they, they, it wasn't a variance, but it was different ways.
Would it allow a certain amount of field?
No, it wasn't a certain amount of field, it was, you know, it was on a neat, on a case-to-case basis, as neat, you know, this is not going to impeach, it's not going to mess up too many people, my neighbors nearby, and so they would let you encroach a little bit, and it was on a case-to-case basis, and, and me setting up a board, I mean, it was, from what I was reading, it looked like a real painting behind us, but they were adopting this so that they could suit both product, property rights and natural resources.
That's probably something that can be run by Chester, because I can see that. Chester probably retired it is.
So that, that is, there was a lot of that involved, too, like you say.
We need to hear from Chester, I think, on that one, too.
You could look at, we've got watershed waters, the direction it goes, for instance, it allows a certain amount of previous area, and you can exceed that in commercial, that it's only for a certain percent of that watershed, it's first on a first-class basis.
So first cert, first come, first served, so the first people that get all that emergency service, then once that's reached.
Then they have to stick by, there's an operating process.
And who's keeping track of how much?
And then I'm going to tell them, I can do eight, I'm still my father, I don't worry about that.
There's a, there's a process for that, but that, with that, we will keep.
Any other comments about? One additional item for reserve, more kind of DOT is looking at making some improvements. Obviously, Route fifteen thirty-eight, Buck Creek Road, they sent these proposed improvements, and Matt will scan these and email them out, if anyone has any comments, they're, they're just asking, like, what are your comments concerning, so if you do have any comments, if you can just push them back through my app, and we can get them together and send them off. Motion to adjourn?
Yes, second.
Second.